Okay. Good evening. We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. It is streaming live on YouTube right now, since it's the entire council here. Today's August 7, 2025 Marion Common Council Budget Committee Meeting. Our first for 2025, looking at 2026. Thank you all the council members that came tonight. And I am going to go ahead and pass this over to the mayor in a second. I will say that I would kinda like to keep this meeting under two hours. Trying to not make it long exhaustive nights. If it needs to go over two hours, then I think it's probably best we move to another meeting if needed. So we'll try and stay within that range. But if we get done before two hours, that's fine as well, right mayor?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. All right, I'm gonna go and hand it over to you.
Okay. What an honor it is to be on my second budget cycle now. I work with you all, present the city budget, thankful for the time and listening and all the work that everyone has done to put into this. So tonight is gonna be a little bit off of traditional how we did budget last year. So today, tonight should I say, we have Paige with us from Baker Chili who's gonna carry a lot of load tonight in the presentation. And explain just from budget 101 to where our budget is and where our finances are and where, how the Senate bill, Senate enrolled act one has, will potentially affect the city. So tonight we'll spend a lot of time on that and engaging in questions around that. And then I believe our budget books are complete. And then the idea is that you guys will have those either by tomorrow or Monday. And then on the second budget committee meeting, which is scheduled, I believe, two weeks from now, we'll be in the more traditional stints where it'll be myself and all the department heads here to go through and pick that apart and how you see fit. So I'm looking forward to working with you all. So without further ado, I'll have Paige come up and run through her presentation. And then we'll be open for engagement and questions throughout the whole way. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming here Paige. Yeah, just the red button. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. You'll be happy to know that my presentation is less than one hour. And this is a great precursor to your budget meetings that are coming up. I know you were all hopeful to get a budget book. But what I want to talk about tonight is like a budget 101. It's just a good refresher. I know many of you already know a lot about this, but this is a very good refresher. And then I am gonna touch a little bit on where you stand for 2026 and beyond in light of the new legislation. So are you gonna show my? Okay. So we can go to the first slide. So the foundation of the budget process is the net assessed value. So that's the value of all the real and personal property, not only within the city, but also within the county as a whole. Those property values are determined at the county level. And actually, the county auditor will certify those values to the Department of Local Government Finance, the DLGF. And they're supposed to do that by August 1, but I can tell you, most counties in the state right now are, have not hit the August 1 deadline. And we don't expect them to because of the changes in Senate Enrolled Act 1. There's lots of things that have to be updated, you know, at the county level. But hopefully sometime this month, we will get your net assessed values. So while that's happening, locally, you're working on the budgets. And so you will prepare the spending plans, the department heads will prepare the spending plans. And the budget will be input into Gateway, which is the Indiana Government Transparency Portal. Anybody from the public can log into Gateway and look at anything related to all taxing units within the state. But then there's also a special login for the finance officers of each taxing unit where they will input the budgets. So that happens July through October. So after the budget is adopted and submitted via the Gateway portal, the DLGF, the state will review those budgets. And really, they don't care about what you're spending your money on. That's for State Board of Accounts to worry about. What they really are looking at is number one, did you follow the statutory process? Meaning, did you submit a notice to taxpayers in Gateway 10 days before your public hearing? Did you have the public hearing? Did you have the adoption? Did you follow those statutory steps? So that's the one thing. The second thing is, can you fund the budget that you're proposing with the cash on hand plus the revenues we're estimating for that year? And it's important that you know that the DLGF, it's not their responsibility to determine if your budget is a balanced budget, a deficit budget? If you're gonna spend every single dime in the bank account? That's not, that's not their authority. Their authority is just what you presented cannot be funded. That's it. So really, where we come into play and we assist the Controller's Office is to make sure that you have a balanced budget where you're not spending more than what you bring in in a given year. Because it's just like at home. If you spend more than what your paychecks are, you're either using your savings account or you're using credit cards or you're borrowing. So it's just like that. So that's a very important thing that we need to look at.
Actually, one second.
Yes.
Just for people might be watching or in the audience, a lot of acronyms. So DLGF, for those of you that don't know, it stands for the Department of Local Government Finance. So that is an actual Indiana department. So when you hear say DLGF, that is an Indiana department that oversees local government finance. Just wanna clarify that.
Yeah, thank you. I'll try not to use those acronyms. And so once the budgets and the tax rates and the levies are certified, the Department of Local Government Finance will certify the tax rates, the property tax rates. And that's very important because once the county gets those tax rates, they can prepare the tax bills. Now, tax bills aren't prepared until sometime in April. But it's important for you to know that there's these credits called circuit breaker credits, which I'm gonna get to in a minute. Those credits are not determined until the tax bills are calculated. So we're, you know, we're gonna talk about estimated circuit breaker credits because it's just an estimate right now. But the actual circuit breakers are not calculated and known until April. And that's why sometimes municipalities have to make a course correction. When they find out what those circuit breaker credits are in April, it's like, oh no, that was either a lot more or a lot less than what we had anticipated. And then the final step of the budget process is the tax payments. So of course, property tax bills are due May 10 and November 10. And those distributions are made to the taxing units in June and December. So property tax is your primary funding source, but you're only getting it basically twice a year. So again, I kinda go back to, you know, our at-home, we're getting a paycheck sometimes twice a month or sometimes once a week. Here, you're getting your primary revenue source only two times a year. So we have to make sure that you have sufficient cash on hand, sufficient cash reserves to cover those times of low cash flow. Next slide. So how does local government fund services? Well, it's not just property tax. There's actually various funding sources. Yes, property tax is the primary funding source. Local income tax comes in at a close second. And then that is really just the tax on your adjusted gross income for the state of Indiana. There's also financial institutions tax, which is a bank tax. And then there's vehicle excise and commercial vehicle excise tax. And those are the taxes that you pay when you go to the license branch to renew your vehicle or register a new vehicle. That is actually distributed out to taxing units within the county. Other taxes would be gas tax. So for you, that would be motor vehicle highway and local road and street. Those are derived from gas taxes. So the taxes you pay at the gas pump. There's also wheel tax. Some counties and some municipalities have adopted a wheel tax. And this county does have a county wheel tax. And that's just a fee per vehicle that is paid also at the license branch. Riverboat wagering tax, you do get a small portion of that. So the statute says that the first 33 million of wagering tax comes off the top and then it gets distributed out to cities, towns, and counties. Cigarette and alcohol beverage tax, you get a little bit of that. That's not a big revenue stream. And then there's a bunch of local revenues, licenses and permits, charges for services, fines and fees, like ordinance violations, building permits, earnings on investments. We've seen a big jump in interest rates, but we don't obviously expect that to continue at the high levels they are now.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
You mentioned gas tax.
Yes.
I know the gas tax goes to the state. But I don't, correct me if wrong, that doesn't get then distributed to the local municipalities, correct?
It does. No, it does.
How do we receive it?
So you receive it in the form of MVH distributions and local road and street distributions. So it goes directly into your motor vehicle highway and your local road and street funds. And there's a big distribution formula. Part of it has to do with how many road miles you have and part of it has to do with population. But you're right, a big chunk is taken off the top and it goes to NDOT.
Well, I knew it went towards roads and motor vehicle stuff, but I thought you meant like it goes to a fund that's directly in the city. So I was like, I don't think we have a fund that the gas tax goes straight into. But I see, it circles back around into the city. I got you.
Yes, it does. It sure does. So the next slide, if you're interested, this is 2024 actual receipts for your major operating funds. So you can see that 17.5 million is property tax. That's 53%. So over half of your revenues are coming from property tax. Local income tax is second there. That's 30% at $9.8 million. And then you've got the other smaller, you know, gas tax, vehicle excise, and other receipts. I think this chart is important because the changes in Senate Enrolled Act 1 and some other legislation that just passed is going to affect property tax revenue and local income tax revenue. Next slide. So property taxes. Property taxes are based on net assessed value. The gross assessed value should be what you could sell the property for in the current market. Although I think for the most part, it is a little bit less than what you can sell your property for. But that said, your taxes are based on a net assessed value. And what the property tax relief legislation did was to try to lower that net assessed value so that your taxable value is lower. So that would hopefully reduce the tax bill. Now, it remains to be seen how much the tax bill will be reduced. I've got an example in here of some of the numbers. But I think what's gonna happen is, yes, there will be some property tax relief, but also local income taxes will go up. So as far as the average household, I'm not sure there's gonna be a whole lot of savings, but we'll see what happens. So our property tax rate is applied to each $100 of net assessed value. So basically, we take the net assessed value, divide it by 100, multiply it by the tax rate, and that is the property tax levy that is generated. That's different than some of our surrounding states where they apply their property tax rate per 1,000. So we are per 100. Moving on to the next slide. So as you probably know, all municipalities in the state, well, really, all taxing units in the state are limited by how much they can raise in property tax. So even if you wanted another 5 million, 10 million, you can't get it. You're limited. And you're limited by something called a maximum levy. We do get a little bit of growth on that maximum levy every year. And it's based on, really based on the economy. It's based on a six-year average of non-farm personal income. But really, what that means is it's based on how well the economy is doing. The legislature limited that growth in 2024, 2025, and 2026 to 4%. Had they not placed those limitations in place, it would have been 5% growth last year, I'm sorry, in 2025. And it would have been 5.5% in 2026. So they did limit that growth again to try to help with property tax relief. What you all need to know is that the amount that you can levy is not impacted by population, assessed values, development, or local expenditure. So in other words, here's a misconception. People think, oh, there's all this development, you know, coming on in the city or, you know, there's a new warehouse, whatever. Yes, that increases your assessed value, but it does not generate additional property tax dollars unless that development is in a TIF area. So here's what happens. When your assessed value goes up, it takes a lower tax rate to get that amount of property tax that you're allowed to raise. That's really what happens, is it adjusts the tax rate. You don't get new revenue.
So can, just to clarify, so let's just say, you said a warehouse, use your example. A warehouse comes to town and builds a huge factory or warehouse and they contribute to the property taxes for the city of Marion. Essentially, that would help alleviate the property taxes for residents, is correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes, it would push down the tax rate.
So big developments can be good for the residents.
It's great, yes.
Just wanted to get that out.
Oh, yes. As your assessed value grows, the rate comes down. But what also comes down is the circuit breaker credits as well. So it helps you, it helps the taxpayers. Growth is good. Growth is good. The next slide, please. So this is, I'm showing you here what your maximum levy limitation is. So your maximum levy is $23.6 million. That's in that first column. And you can allocate your property tax levy to four funds, general, motor vehicle, highway, park, and aviation. And during budget time is when you can make, you know, those allocations. If you need more in general, you can take away from another fund or vice versa. So this is 2025. So your maximum levy is 23.6 million. That will grow by 4% in 2026. Now, that doesn't mean that you'll get that full growth. And I'm gonna talk about that in a minute, but that has to do with circuit breaker tax credits. Yes, we'll grow that 23.6 by 4%, but you're not gonna collect all of that because of circuit breaker tax credits. There are property tax levies that are outside those levy limits. Debt service, anytime you have a debt where you're going to levy a property tax to make those debt payments, that is outside the levy limit. So that is a good way for you to get some large capital projects done and funded by using that method. Your cumulative capital development fund is also outside the levy limit. So that's a great fund to have as well. So those total 895,000. So all in, the city is levying $24.5 million for 2025. So if we move on to the next slide, this is how the state kind of works your budget. So, you know, they look at, okay, you're levying 24.5 million per your budget. And that is a combination of your maximum levy and those levies outside. Now they need to look at, okay, what is your net assessed value? So for 2025, your net assessed value is just over $1 billion. So the rate comes last. We can't calculate the rate until we know your assessed value. So right now, we don't have the 2026 assessed value. So I just want you to know, that's kind of how things work. First is, how much can you levy? Second is, what's the tax base? And then third is, this is your tax rate. So 2.4222, that is your tax rate for 2025. And if you go to the next slide, you will see that your tax rate has actually gone down over the last five years. And the reason it has gone down is because your net assessed value has gone up. This is a very typical chart that we are seeing all across the state. So sometimes taxpayers think that the reason why their tax bill is going up is because you're increasing the rates or the county's increasing the rates. But that isn't the case here. Your tax rate has actually gone down. What is causing tax bills to go up by and large is the property value is going up. So I think that's very important for people to understand.
So just for clarity, it's not like the county assessor is just hitting a button and goes, eh, we need more money.
Yeah.
These are all regulated, controlled. It's actually set by the state.
It is. It is set and controlled by the state. So next slide. So now we're gonna get into circuit breaker tax credits. And this is a very confusing concept, but they're here to stay. They've been around for a while. So what is it? It is a credit that limits the taxpayer's total property tax bill. And it's based on the gross value of the property. So when I say, oh, that's a 1% property, that means I'm talking about residential homestead. And it means that your residential homestead is capped at 1% of the gross value. And I will show an example that will make it clear. So when the county calculates your tax bill and you go above that cap, the calculated tax bill is above that cap, then the county's gonna issue a credit to you as a taxpayer. Well, that means you're not paying your full tax bill because you're getting a credit. Pre-circuit breaker, you would have paid the whole tax bill as calculated. But now we have these credits that are worked in. So the result of all these credits being issued is that you don't collect your full amount of property tax levy. So going to the next slide, here are the tax caps in the state of Indiana. And this is in our constitution now, so it would be very difficult to change. So I think they are here to stay. But we have three levels of tax caps. We have residential homestead, which is capped at 1% of gross assessed value. So if your gross assessed value before deductions is $100,000, your maximum tax bill is $1,000. Now, there is, there are times or situations where you could pay above that 1,000. If a school has had like a voter referendum that the voters approved and they have a tax rate based on that voter referendum, you have to pay that tax rate. That's not, that is outside the circuit breaker cap. So there are circumstances you could pay above that cap. But generally speaking, if there are no referendums, voter referendums, you should not be paying above the cap. The 2% properties are other residential, rental residential, and long-term care facilities. That's capped at 2%, so they have a higher cap. And then everything else, which is generally commercial, industrial, and personal property, is capped at 3%. So the next slide is showing an example of this. And this is an example based on the Marion Mill taxing district. So the part of Marion that's in Mill Township, you've got like seven or eight taxing districts. I just picked one. So this is a residential home value of $200,000. That's the gross assessed value. After deductions, the taxable value is only 95,000. And the reason that is, is because you get a $48,000 standard deduction. And then on top of that, another 37.5%. So we don't pay taxes on the 200,000. We pay taxes on the net value after deductions, which is 95,000. The district tax rate for Marion Mill taxing district is 4.7858. That includes the school, the library, the county, the city of Marion, a township. It includes all of those together. At that tax rate, many taxpayers are hitting the caps, probably most of them. So the calculated tax bill is 4,0547. But the credit that's gonna be issued is 2,0547 so that this taxpayer doesn't go above the 2,000. So they're actually getting a credit of more than what they're gonna pay. So again, pre-circuit breaker, this taxpayer would have paid 4,0547. But they're not now. They're gonna pay $2,000. So that credit has to be funded somehow. And it really is, the way it's funded is a reduction of your and everybody within the district's tax levy. So if you move on to the next slide, you'll see how this one tax bill, how these reductions are spread. So in Marion Mill taxing district, again, we have Grant County, Marion City, Mill Township, Mississauga School, Gas City, Mill Township Library, and East Central Solidway. So all those rates combined. So how the loss is allocated is based on really the rates. So for example, the city of Marion's tax rate is 50.6% of that total district rate. So the city of Marion is gonna get allocated 50% of that credit. So the higher your tax rate within each of these taxing districts, the more you will get allocated in this shortfall in property tax. So moving on to the next slide, now this is, you know, we're kinda bringing this all together now. Remember when I said you are levying $24.5 million in 2025? You are expected to collect only 18.5 million. Because 6,46,000 is returned to taxpayers in the form of credits. So without circuit breaker, you would have collected 24.5 million. Without or with circuit breaker, you're gonna collect 18.458 million. So the, your non-collection rate, what you're not gonna collect is about 25% of what you levy. That's a big chunk. I mean, let's just say it simply, if we didn't have a world of circuit breakers, you'd have an additional $6 million to operate.
But I will say the flip side is it puts $6 million back into our taxpayers' pockets.
That is correct. Circuit breakers are a good way to protect the taxpayer, for sure. Local income tax, the next slide. So here's where we start talking a little bit about the changes that came out of legislation. So for years, 2025 through 2027, we're operating under the current system. And it's still a tax applied to the county-wide adjusted gross income. And everybody within the county pays the same rate. So that's the system we know right now. But for years 2028 and beyond, at least based on what's currently passed in legislation, the tax base will depend on the type of local income tax. So for instance, the county can adopt their own local income tax that will be based on county-wide adjusted gross income. Fire and EMS will be based on county-wide. Really, most of these are county-wide, but let's get down to municipalities with a 3,500 or less population, or I'm sorry, municipalities with 3,500 population above. So the larger municipalities like you, your tax rate will be applied only to the adjusted gross income of those living within your municipality. That's a big change. Municipalities under 3,500 population will be based on the adjusted gross income of the entire county minus those that are above, are 3,500 and above. This is a big change. And it's gonna be a very complex calculation that the state will have to perform, the Department of Revenue and the Department of Local Government Finance. And here's another big change is that, remember I said that everybody within the county is paying the same rate? When this new structure comes into play, you could have people living within the city that pays a different rate than those outside the city. So this is, this is very different. No single taxpayer, no matter where they live, can pay more than 2.9%. So the county's gonna have to figure out what the mix of the rates are. Your 1.2% maximum that you can adopt is not effective. You can go to that, the county can't tell you you can't. The county can go to their full 1.2%. So now we're at 2.4%. All these other ones have maximum rates, but if you add all of them up, it's 3%. So somebody's gonna have to make a decision, not you. I mean, you could go below your 1.2, but the county's gonna have to make sure that the other rates that they're adopting doesn't push it over the 2.9 because they can't by statute.
Quick question. I went through some training on this and I want some clarity. Maybe you can verify this. On the fire EMS lit, from my understanding, it's a 0.4%.
Point four.
0.4%, sorry. But the way that's collected, it's, well, it's collected throughout the county, but then it's distributed to county units, but also the local. then it's distributed to county units, but also the local, other governmental entities above 3,500. So if that's being collected, the city could also see additional lit through the fire EMS? Is that correct?
Yeah. So, so the fire EMS has to be distributed to fire districts, fire territories, and municipal fire departments. At the county's discretion, it can also go to township fire departments and volunteer fire departments. Nothing in the statute right now says the county gets any of that. I think that's a change that we're probably going to see. Because I think they meant for it to go to the county. But yes, you're right. The city could see a share of that. Absolutely.
Well, the way I understood it was that they have to divide it up by population.
They do. It's by service area, I'm sorry, square mileage, square miles of the service area and population. Yes, those two factors combined.
Do you, do you foresee, is there talk, do you know, downstate, them adding police to that? Because fire EMS, but there's nothing for public safety.
Right now, right now, there, right now, there isn't, but there could be. The last I heard with discussions at AIM and various places is that the legislature wants the municipalities and the county to use their, their municipal services rate, or their county services rate to cover police.
Okay. Just interesting, they chose to just pick fire and EMS.
They wanted you to use your general services rate to cover that stuff.
Do we have any projection yet on that? What, do we have mayor, or do you have any numbers yet on what that fire EMS lit? You getting to that?
Well, I don't know that I have the fire EMS lit. We can, we can calculate that for you, but I have your 1.2% lit, yeah.
Okay.
The fire and EMS lit is going to take some time to calculate, because we've got to get the service area, the square mileage of all those different fire providers and EMS providers, and the population. The population is not the issue, it's the square mileage.
Because we'll have our own lit, which we currently do. Well, yeah, kind of. But then, we could potentially receive additional funding through that .04%.
Yes.
If the county does that.
Yes. Correct. If the county does that, yes.
Well, if the county implements the lit, that's up to them. But if they do, then they have to distribute it based on population and square miles.
That's correct. Yes. So the next slide is just, just for your information, like where is the county at right now with their lit rates? So right now, Grant County has a total local income tax rate of 2.55%. And that's made up of certified shares at 1.3%, economic development, .24%. There is a property tax relief component of 1%, and a special purpose of .01%. These will all expire at the end of 2027, except for the special purpose local income tax. I think they did that for jail. That will not expire, but all these other ones will expire. And here's the one that causes us the greatest concern, is the property tax relief local income tax, because that is helping to keep your circuit breakers down. This is a credit that is funded by local income tax. It's a credit to the taxpayer. So this credit is applied first, then the circuit breaker is applied. So we can see that by the time we get to 2028, early projections from legislative services shows that your circuit breaker losses jump way up. So that is a concern for us.
So just for, sorry to interrupt you again. Sorry, just for some clarity then. So what I'm hearing, and what I've learned, is that there's property tax relief, but we're going to be shifting the burden to those people that are working.
Yes. Yes.
So, given the state having a budget cycle.
Yes.
Minimum of two legislative sessions and an election, how much faith do we put in 2028 numbers? And how much worry do we give that?
I think, I do think we should be worried. I think that things could be changed, but listening to the Speaker of the House and other state reps, this is what they wanted. So I don't know how much change we will see. I think right now, we're trying to provide as much data as we can to the State House and to AIM, the, the, you know, city and town organization here. Because we have got to let the legislature know what the effects are going to be of this. I mean, there are some municipalities that will have to drastically cut services. I don't know if you saw the article, at the city of Elkhart, they could lose like millions of dollars. I think it was like $40 million. That's a lot. So as these meetings occur, we've got to get the message out that this isn't doable in, in a lot of municipalities.
Have you heard why they wanted this? I mean, where, what, what brought this on?
What brought this on is taxpayers are saying that their tax bills are way too high. And, and understandable, what was happening is values of properties were going up. So why can't we just try to limit the growth in net assessed value? I mean, they kind of did that here, but it, it's almost like to an extreme. What's going to happen is it's going to drive up tax rates, drive up circuit breakers, and then the local income tax that, that municipalities and counties can adopt, for some municipalities and counties, that's not going to be enough to bridge that gap.
Yeah. To me, it's like, they're playing like a shell game. They're making it look like this, but it's really going to be this.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Don't forget to turn your mic on, because nobody at home can hear you without it. But no one at home can hear if your mic's off, just so you know.
Let me say it again?
There you go.
All right. My theory, and having worked in a leadership position down there for a couple of years, is a bunch of people's election bill, where they can say, yeah, we lowered property taxes, and then they leave it to the locals to be, potentially, to be the bad guys, by either cutting service or raising local taxes. And I may be wrong, I'll own that if I am, but I'd put money that I'm not far off.
Next slide?
Who gave you that last word on that one?
So, just for your information, counties still can make changes to local income tax for 2026 and 2027, if, if they so choose. Now, your county has what is called a local income tax council. It's like a phantom council. And it's made up of the county units and all the municipalities. And votes come in from this phantom council based on population. So really, the three units that have the most votes are, is Grant County, Marion City, and Gas City. So, you know, Marion and Gas City could get together and decide to make a change without the county's involvement, if, if you wanted to. But other than that, I mean, Grant County could get together with, I guess, you. They can't do it on their own, is the point I'm trying to make here. So that's just for your information. I have no, I don't work with Grant County, I have no idea if they're looking to do anything, but you should know that you kind of have a say in this. I mean, they're going to need, if they want to make a change, they kind of need for you to be involved in that in some way. But it would only be for '26 and '27, because this just expires at the end of 2027. Yes. Yep. Yep. So now, moving on to page.
Everything else, that's in '28.
At the end of 2027.
I told them, remind them about the microphone.
Oh, okay.
That's why he's repeating. I'm telling you, people cannot hear at home unless you have a mic on.
So the next slide shows those maximum rates. We kind of already talked about this, but the county can adopt a 1.2% rate for their county services. Fire protection and EMS, .4%. Non-municipal, so that would be for libraries and townships, .2%. Then municipalities less than 3,500, 1.2%, but then that 1.2% gets distributed out to those small cities and towns based on their population. But then you can adopt one at 1.2%, just for your municipality. So again, can't exceed .2, 2.9, but if you add all those up, it comes out to be 3%. Okay. Page, or the next slide. So budget preparation, you know, we always tell taxing units that we work with to start with your revenues, and this city does. We, we help the Controller's Office with revenue estimates, so we've already prepared that for 2026, and I'm going to show you some of that here in a minute. Then you just need to see, okay, well, now how much can we afford? It's just like at home, when we go out to buy a house or a car, you really need to figure out what you can afford before you go out and make those purchases. So part of doing that is to review 2024 actual disbursements, how did you perform against your budget? Review year-to-date through June 30th. Hopefully, department heads kind of looked at what they've spent so far this year. What capital do you need to build in for 2026? And just kind of adjust from there. I think as we get further into this phase in of legislation, we're going to have to be very mindful of prioritizing our services. What's going to be most important? Because if we have to start cutting, we're going to have to figure out what is priority? What are, what are our priorities? It's almost like zero-based budgeting. Let's start with what you absolutely have to have and add from there. Next slide has to do with cash reserves. So this is a component that is sometimes missed during the budget process, but this city has done very well the last few years in looking at cash reserves and making sure that you have strong reserves to cover you through cash flow shortages. So we recommend that ending cash in a major operating fund should not fall below 15% of what you spend that year. And that's really only two and a half months of reserve, so that is the floor. Really, you want to be somewhere between 25 and 50%. 50% would give you six months of reserves, which is ideal. But it's not a one-size-fits-all. It depends on what the fund is, are you making payroll out of that fund, the size of your government? There's lots of different factors that play into it. But again, we help analyze that for you to make sure that your reserves are sufficient for each of your major funds. You should never use cash reserves for recurring costs. So cash reserves, the appropriate use of that is for capital outlays or one-time expenditures. You don't want to fund raises or new personnel with cash reserves, because again, it's just like at home, you're dipping into your savings account, or you're borrowing, or using credit cards. You don't want to get into that situation. Next slide. So ways that we're going to start looking at, you know, bridging funding gaps, I know we're not really here at that level yet, but I'm thinking that a lot of taxing units, probably '27, '28, are going to have to really take a look at, again, their operations. Is there a better way to reallocate resources? I know that some municipalities are going to start looking at operational assessments. Are there better ways to provide services, more efficient ways to provide services? Government consolidation, I think some of the smaller cities and towns will have to start consolidating maybe with their townships, or maybe even township consolidation. Hopefully, we don't get to the point where we have to reduce headcount, but already there are municipalities looking at vacant positions and just not filling them. What are the ways to generate new revenue? So there is a municipal wheel tax that you can adopt. You can adjust your charges for services if it's been a while, like some municipalities are looking at their fee schedules, like for building permits and other fees, and is, you know, is it time to adjust those fees? I know that doesn't bring in a lot of money, but we need to kind of look at everything. And then food and beverage tax, which this city has already implemented, so that's going to bring in some additional revenue there. And again, just prioritizing your budget, I already mentioned that. So the next slide is prepare sustainable expense budgets. I want to repeat that again, because this city, at least the last two years I've been working with you, that has been your primary goal, to have balanced budgets. So that is what's going to keep you sustainable into the future. And you'll be able to hopefully withstand some of these things that are coming out of the new legislation. We can at least prepare for it. So if you go to the next slide now, this is the information I wanted to share with you related to the 2026 budget. So again, we have, we have already calculated your receipts. These are estimates right now, and we will update as we get additional information. But column A is where we think you will end this year in these major funds. Transportation is negative, but that's going to get corrected. And transportation is probably always going to be negative, because there's grants that come in, and the grants run a little bit behind. So don't, don't be so worried about that. Column B is the estimated receipts for 2026. The piece we don't have yet that I wish I had tonight was, or is, the local income tax for 2026. So the Department of Local Government Finance should be putting out those numbers by the end of next week. They will still be estimates, but they won't change unless the county or you all change something that has to do with local income tax. So we should have good numbers next week. Right now, in these numbers, we have just flatlined your local income tax. So I'm hoping the receipts will be a little bit higher, but again, we just get information as it comes in, and we can update these accordingly. So general fund, $24,695 is what we're estimating right now. The budgets that have been turned in so far is 24.5 million. So you are better than balanced. We're estimating an ending cash balance of 12.1 million, which is 49%. That's very close to the 50%, and remember, I said that is ideal. And if you go down through here, we were able to allocate property tax so that all of these other funds are balanced, as proposed right now. And again, I know you don't, you don't have the budget books yet, and so this is very preliminary, but it looks really good. And it, it's hard to balance a budget, trust me. I know, I work with a lot of cities and towns in the state. So this is the goal. It's by no means final, but this is just kind of a preview at what we've been working on, and, and, you know, knowing also that your revenues are going to go down in 2026. This builds that factor in, your revenue going down from Senate Enrolled Act 1.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
And maybe you're going to get to it. I, I've heard several times that Senate Enrolled Act 1 isn't actually lowering our revenue, it's just slowing the growth of it. Can you clarify that?
That's correct. That is correct. So, there's a couple of things that it's doing. One, remember when I said that your levy growth would have been 5.5%? Now it's 4%. So yes, it's not growing as much as it could. Also, the circuit breakers are going to come in higher. You're right, it's not really lowering it, except for when we get to 2020. I've got a good graph that'll show you what I'm talking about. And I think that's what the legislature wants you to focus on, is we're not taking revenue away, we're just slowing the growth. But the problem is slowing the growth is going to have an impact on you, because if your revenue is only growing, let's say, 1% per year, but your costs are growing 3% to 4%, that's a gap. That's a budgetary gap, any way you want to shape it.
It's less more.
It's, right, thank you. And I've heard people say that at the State House, too. Okay. So, so yes, I totally agree with that statement, but I, we also have to look at the big picture, and the big picture is, your revenue's not going to grow very much. In fact, once we get to 2028, it does take a dive. So again, very preliminary. Let's talk a little bit about the legislation in a little more detail. So what's happening is, you guys have probably already heard this a million times, so I'm going to try to get through this quickly. I've got 10 minutes.
Well, you have an hour and 10 minutes.
Oh, I'm not going to take that.
You just won't have time for anything else.
I'm not going to take that long.
Okay.
So, there was a bunch of restructuring, you can go to the next slide, please. There was a bunch of restructuring with the homestead deductions, it added additional credits, it added deductions for 2% properties, which we've never had in the past. 2% properties, just as a reminder, are the rental residential properties, the long-term care facilities, the agricultural properties. We've never had deductions on those before. So that's going to lower those taxable net assessed values. Good for the taxpayer, but it's going to drive down your net assessed value, or significantly slow the growth. And then again, what I said before, if those net assessed values don't grow as rapidly as in the past, your tax rates are going to start creeping back up along with your circuit breaker losses. That's just how it works, it's an inverse relationship.
So I just wanted to give an analogy. It's one of my favorite things to do, is give analogies. So it's, for those that are watching at home or listening, so this is essentially equivalent to your cost of living and groceries going up 5%, but your boss gives you a 1% raise.
Yep.
And you're like, well, how am I going to keep living if I'm only getting 1% raise, but everything around me is going up 5%? Is that correct?
Yes. Yep, I would agree with that.
Just trying to make it understandable.
Yep. Yep. So going to the next slide, I, here's kind of a Yep, yep. So going to the next slide, here's kind of a chart of what's happening. So the standard deduction on a residential homestead is $48,000 as we sit here today. That's going to get phased out. So by the time we get to 2031, that'll be zero. But the, what's happening is the supplemental homestead deduction, which is 37.5% of the value of the property, it's going to get phased up. So by the time we get to 2031, the taxable value of the property will only be 1/3 of its value. Basically, there's going to be a deduction of 66.7%. Then there are some other credits and things that will be applied as well that will be helpful to the taxpayer. If you go to page 27, we kind of, we picked a home value that is actually the average home value in the state, not, not here, just statewide, 240,700. So the taxable value in 2025 of that home value is 120,000. By the time we get to 2031, the taxable value will be 80,000. So, so yes, the tax bill will be based on a lower net assessed value, but the tax rate is certainly going to be higher by the time we get to there.
Oh, sorry, another question on this.
Yep.
Do you feel like this is a fair adjustment for all income tax brackets, or let's just say all, all home values, or is this disproportionate to people with lower-value homes versus higher value?
Hmm, I don't think I've really thought about that, honestly. I don't think I've given that any thought. I mean, I feel like it is going to perhaps lower the tax bill for, for any taxpayer, but I don't think the reduction is going to be significant. And, and I really am interested, and we are running models at Baker-Tilly, we just haven't finished the model yet, but we want to know how's it going to affect the average household? Because I want to see what it does to the tax bill and to the income tax. Like, the average household, how much of a savings will there be? That's, that's what I'm going to be interested in.
Another question for you. Do you, is anyone at the State House passing these laws, are they asking Baker-Tilly for data? Or do you know where they're getting their data from?
So where they, so the State House has legislative analysts that they get their data from, but they also use some data from legislative, the Legislative Services Agency. But there are some things that they, I don't believe they've run any calculations on, like the local income tax, I've not seen any calculations. We are doing that. And we reached out to the State House. In fact, we were, and we had an opportunity to go down and talk to House Speaker Houston. We're trying to provide data to them if they will accept it, but that remains to be seen. They have legislative analysts. They were interested in how we were calculating local income tax, so we shared all that with them. We are happy to work with them and cooperate with them in any way. So we've, we've reached out. But I, I think there's some things that they just simply haven't run, and I could be wrong. We did ask Legislative Services if we could have some of their data, because some of it is public, but other data, they say that it's not public. But I feel like it would be beneficial if you all had that data. There is a report, they put a report out on April 9th, and that is publicly available, and it's on the General Assembly's website. But I found that there was another report that some people are getting that is dated in May, and they would not supply that report. So when I say some people, some mayors are getting it, I, I just think if they've got new numbers, they should share it because it looks better. The numbers look better. But anyway, there's a, there is an information deficit right now, honestly. And I know all of you are trying to pass budgets, and I get it, and we're doing the best we can to provide as much data as possible. But there are so many moving parts in this legislation. It's very, very complex.
Yeah, you, you guys aren't the problem. You're doing great. It's not, it's.
We just need more, more information from those that apparently have it. The next slide has to do with that, those 2% property assessment deductions. So yeah, those deductions are going to start ramping up. It's zero currently. By 2031, 1/3 of the 2% properties will, will be deducted. So that's, that's a deduction we don't even have right now, and it is going to ramp up through 2031. Page 29 has to do with business personal property. So right now, properties 80, or below 80,000, that's business personal property, is tax exempt. By the time we get to 2027, business personal property that's below 2 million will be tax exempt. So there's going to be some taxpayers that will no longer have to pay property tax.
Do you know how long it's been at 80%?
No, I don't.
I'm just wondering, are they just adjusting it for inflation from 20 years ago?
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I really don't. Page 30, I'm not going to linger on this, just to let you know that had they not changed the, or had they not limited the levy growth, it would have been 5.5%. For 2027, they haven't limited yet, but there's nothing to say they won't go in there and limit that growth. Page 31. Okay, now we're getting into the estimated shortfall from Senate Enrolled Act One, and this is based on Legislative Services, a report dated April 9th, 2025. So this is, and I call it a shortfall, but this is, this is kind of an increase in your circuit breaker credits. So we showed you your circuit breaker credits in a previous slide. This is the 840,000 more of circuit breaker is expected in 2026, almost a million more in 2027, and then we go off a cliff in 2028. Remember, I said in 2028, the property tax relief, local income tax expires at the end of 2027. That's going to drive up your circuit breakers, unless they do something to, to make a change with that. That's another $5 million on top of what your, what your current reduction is for circuit breaker. Page 32, oh, we already talked about this. This is the new local income tax structure, and who can adopt each one of these. The county is going to have the ability to adopt all of them except yours. So you will have the ability to adopt your own, and that will occur in 2027. So you'll have until October 1st of 2027 to adopt a lit for implementation in 2028. So the next slide shows what the estimate is of that. If you go all the way to the max, we just kept it in current numbers, we didn't put any growth on it, but you could potentially have growth. But I wanted to compare apples to apples. So in 2025, you have lit certified shares that goes into your general fund, and that's about 7.5 million. You also have lit economic development that goes in your CEDAT fund, your County Economic Development Fund. That's about 1.5 million. So all of those combined is almost 9 million. Based on current estimates, 1.2% will bring in 7.5 million. And those things that you're funding right now out of economic development, you'll have to fund them out of general, because that economic development's going to go away. And the 7.5 will go into your general fund, and you'll have to pay for what you're using, you know, economic development for now. You'll have to just pay it out of your general fund. So right now, the projection, again, based on the estimated adjusted gross income within the municipal city, that's lower. It's 1.45 million.
Clarify for the, that is if we max out the local income tax?
Yes.
That, that's if we pass the local income tax that is maxed. We still, that's still the shortfall then.
So if I hear this correct, so if I hear this correctly, again, so we're, just want to understand this. So the state, the state who has its own budget is telling the local entities how to, or they're telling them how to control their tax revenue for their own budgets, but then is telling us, oh, by the way, you can tax the people going to work more. Is that what I'm hearing?
Exactly.
So even if I'm, even if we establish a 1.2 lit, okay, we're losing, we'll say we're, we, meaning the city, is losing 1.4 million, but the people that are going to work every day are losing as well. Is that correct?
They will likely pay a higher income tax rate.
Okay, just getting clarity. I just want this to be transparent, so people hear it.
But we can't panic yet, because politics being what it is, we've got two and a half years.
The problem, though, is that, you know, when, when we look at projects, we're looking at, you know, raises potentially with police and fire, we can't commit to anything until we know really where this is going to land. So it puts us all in a limbo for three years, at least.
And again, that is, so if we don't, if the council refuses to pass any local income tax, their loss is now 8.9 million. So, yes, so, so when, and when 2027 gets here, that puts us, myself and, and the council, all you guys, in a situation where either we're going to pass a 1.2% local income tax, or experience a reduction of 8, 9 million instead of the 1.4.
I mean, they're, they're kind of forcing our hand. I mean, what, what do you do? You know, I mean, like you said, you can't lose $9 million. But, but now, let me ask you this. The state, they didn't change anything on how they get their money, though, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, exactly.
I didn't look at the state.
Well, we got a new cigarette tax. Actually, real quick, that, in 2028, I know the mayor said 8.9, but since, let's just say we did not do a lit, and we lost the 7.5 million, what percentage of that, do we know what percentage of that, what percentage of the budget that would be if we lost 7.5, estimated in 2028?
I, how much is it? Your budget for the general fund is 24, yeah, I can't do math on my head, 24.5 million.
So about 35%. That's basically, I don't know.
That's a bit, I mean.
A lot of people.
I, yes, I would think that would be significant.
That's what I'm saying by the shell game. They're saying, hey, look at what we're doing for your property tax, but your city can't function now because we're, we're not giving them any money. So you can live in your nice home and have fun, but don't go outside of it because there's nothing to do.
Yeah, I think this is a piece that we really need to provide information to the State House. And we, Baker-Tilly, will do as much of that as possible, but you all probably need to share the information that, you know, that this isn't doable. I mean, for the very, the larger cities like yourself, Fort Wayne, South Bend, they're already having these meetings, and it's getting into the newspaper, and, and it's getting recognized and noticed that this is going to be crippling to some municipalities. So I totally agree with what you said, is we need to take a cautious approach. Will there be changes? Yeah, maybe, but what will those changes be? I think you just need to take a cautious approach. What, I mean, I don't see any other way to, to get around it. It's just.
And just for clarity, one more time, if we don't pass the local income tax at 1.2%, 8.9 million was what we have to cut.
That's assuming nothing changes.
Yes, as of now, yep.
Which is about, that's probably closer to what, maybe 40% of our entire budget. That's, how many departments? I don't know. Yeah, okay.
So page, or slide 34, kind of puts all this together. This is your actual and estimated revenues just for those major funds. So 2025, 35.1 million. 2026 is when we first start seeing the impact of SEA One, and at least on current estimates, it does look like your revenue is going to go down to 34 million. But let me tell you, there's a little, there's some stuff in play here. One is that you've been getting a supplemental local income tax for the past couple of years. We don't anticipate that for 2026. So that's part of that loss. If you get one, great, but that's actually going to go away for sure, starting in 2028. And that, and you've gotten some good distributions of that. And then another factor is we do expect that interest rates will go down, so you may not get as much of the interest income. So yes, we are being conservative on some of these numbers, but if you go to 2027, you're just getting a little bit of an increase there, and then 2028 is where it kind of drops. So that, again, very preliminary numbers. And we will, once we get our model complete, we're developing a property tax model that is supposed to work in all of these various changes in SEA One and House Bill 1427, we are going to update your numbers. And we're maybe two to three weeks away from there. I don't think much is going to change for 2026, but we really want to get a good picture of that 2028 cliff. But, so I want you to know, we are working on all that. This is kind of a work in progress, but I think we have some good estimates right now of at least where you'll be in 2026. The last slide, there's.
Can I ask one question real quick, please?
Yeah.
Slide 34, this assumes we don't increase the lit to 1.2, right?
No, this does assume the full 1.2, yes. This assumes the full, it, yes, just as the mayor had stated. I, we went ahead and assumed the full 1.2, but.
So also, going back to the EMS and fire, there's a potential, if the county does the 0.4, that could help supplement some of that as well.
Yes, and we will provide you with numbers of that as well. It's just, it's not a guarantee, obviously, because the county can decide if they want to do it or not. We, we are going to be helping counties. We don't work with Grant County, though, but in a lot of counties, we work with the county unit of government as well, just not here. And we are going to help the county, along with the municipalities, determine what might be the best levels of local income tax, because some counties don't have to go to the max. So we can help with that. If, if, if Grant County would like our help, we, we would certainly be willing to help. But yes, we will at least give you the data that you need to go talk to the county, for instance. So we'll be able to tell you what your portion of the 0.4% fire EMS would be. The last slide just has to do with road funding. Probably the only thing that really applies to you, well, there's a couple of things. One is the top one, where it says it reduces the percentage that counties and municipalities are required to allocate to MVH restricted. So right now, you are required to put 50% of your motor vehicle highway gas tax in a restricted fund, and 50% in a non-restricted fund. If you meet these two qualifications, you can now just put 40% in the restricted and 60% in non-restricted. The two qualifications are, you have to keep or maintain an average pavement quality rating, it's called a Pazer rating, of at least six, and no more than 15% of your roads are classified as being in failed condition. So if you can meet those, which a lot of municipalities I work with do meet that, then they're allowing you to only restrict 40%. And the restricted, by the way, just as a reminder, your restricted fund can only be used for construction, reconstruction, and preservation of roads. So it's sometimes hard to put personnel in there, because you have to tie the personnel to a specific project. So some municipalities find it difficult to have that much restricted. So that's helpful to a certain extent.
I have a question on that MVH restricted and non, and, and this is an authentic question, but can that money be used for alley resurfacing? Or does it have to be, because I don't know, alleys are public, but are they not? Even unrestricted, you got to use your mic, turn your mic on.
I thought that they told me that you couldn't use it for alleyways because they're not roadways.
I think that's correct. I think that's correct, but I honestly, I, I think an attorney would need to interpret that, but I, I think you are correct, because it is very specific. It says roads, and I don't think an alley is considered a road.
I just wanted to check the restricted versus un, and if there was, okay. Maybe we could talk to our legislator and push that for a change.
Yeah. And then another piece that might.
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
You mentioned that the, the percentage of the roadway and the grading.
Yeah.
How is that determined and when?
Your, your, your highway superintendent, or your, your road and street superintendent should know the answer to that question. I don't, unfortunately. I think it, I mean, every, it seems like every highway department person I've talked to immediately knows that number off the top of their head. And I don't, I, I'm just not in, I just don't know.
Well, they probably only know the number if it's a good number.
Yeah, that's right.
If it's bad, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, exactly. And then you don't have a municipal wheel tax, the county has a wheel tax, but you could adopt a municipal wheel tax here. And the, they And the, they did put a little carrot in the, um, legislation that it's not mandatory to have the municipal wheel tax to get the community crossing grant funds, that that was in a proposed piece, that you had to adopt it. That's no longer in there, but they are throwing out a little incentive that if you do adopt it, you could potentially get some additional grant monies based on your road mileage. So again, not required, but...
The way I understood, the way I heard, was that if, if you implement one, then you have access to any excess.
Yes, there you go.
That's assuming there's excess left from the state.
Yes, right. If there is excess, right.
And I, and I'm gonna go back to that, and maybe the same answer, if we, if we had a local municipal wheel tax, can that money be used for, towards alley paving?
Yes, it can, because that can be used for anything that your motor vehicle highway and local road and street can be used for, not the restricted part, the non-restricted, so yes.
No, it didn't.
President McKinley, I've, I've got a, a comment on that. I tried to initiate the local, uh, wheel tax for this year, so we would have that additional money. And it was evidently shot down. And with that being shot down, we lost 173,000 dollars, because we would have drawn more on that wheel tax than we're getting from the county. But the deadline is September 1st.
How did we lose 173? Where'd that 173 come from?
Because if we have our own wheel tax, we gain more with the additional than what the county gives us.
Is that going to implement this year or next year with the municipal?
If you implemented it by September 1st, you would start receiving it in 2026.
Right. Yeah, we would receive what's being charged, but you said 173. Where's that number coming from?
That was an additional amount from what we are getting. Right now, we're getting 583,000. It was gonna go up to 760 some thousand if we would implement our own wheel tax.
500 from where? I'm just trying to understand the funds.
The wheel tax.
Oh, so 500 from the state wheel tax?
From the county.
Or county, I'm sorry.
You get county. This would give you additional monies just through your own municipal.
But it had to be done by September 1st. I already had a draft drawn up, but it was shot down.
Go ahead, Councilman Brenner.
Question real quickly, you mentioned Fort Wayne and South Bend would be the two, uh, major cities that have already started doing some things. What are, what are they doing right now?
They are having Baker Tilly run analysis to see how it's going to impact them. So the, similar to what I did here, but we, once we get our property tax model built, they're gonna have even better numbers at that point, so...
So again, it goes, this all, and I hear what you're saying, Vice President Fordice. Um, I, I think we just wanted to understand more of where we're going, because before we were to implement any other, I hate to say the tax word, I think we want to understand this, because I don't want to knee jerk and go, oh, we're gonna raise all your taxes, and then, oh, actually, you know what? In 2026, they changed the legislation, and we're good now. So I'm very, very, I hear what you're saying, but I'm very, very hesitant to, to do anything until we know the full impact of this, because I, I don't, I just, I just gotta be very careful with it. It's unfortunate that we're in this position. I'll just say that.
But i- if I may comment on that, we weren't gonna increase any taxes on the wheel tax. We were gonna have our, our own. We were carving it out from the county. It was gonna remain the same as far as the rate of the, the tax. We weren't gonna increase any taxes. I want to make that clear. We were just carving it out from the county, and then we would get the additional. Also, with the county wheel tax, we cannot use any on, of that money for IDAC crossroads grants. We cannot take anything out of the wheel tax and use it for our crossroads grants for IDAC. That has changed. So we'll have to supplement that from something else, and I've already talked to the Controller's Office on that. So we did supplement it this year for the 3.5 million on the paving, and now I believe it's decreased to a million on roads. Is that correct? On the grant, matching grant? On the roads? From 3.1?
A million and a half matching to just now a million.
To a million, so yeah. So we can't use any, uh, wheel tax for that.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. We'll definitely have to look at all this stuff very seriously.
Well, that completes my presentation.
Thank you so much. Uh, that was very informative, and I think, if, I will say to the council members, if you have people with a lot of questions, tell them, go to our YouTube page. You can learn all about it, because it's gonna be on our YouTube page. Um, this was, uh, very, very beneficial, so...
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, I think this was, uh, I wanted to do this on, on, on purpose on our first Budget Committee meeting, so everyone can understand where we are and where we're headed, so we can get in our minds, um, what needs to happen. Again, I don't want us, to councilman Klein's point, I don't want us to overreact so much right now that we just shut the city down, scared of what's gonna happen in 2028, and it might not happen. However, I want us to be aware and concerned enough to make decisions, uh, in 2027 if this legislation does stay in place. So, um, that's what this was for. Now, is there any other, uh, follow-up questions for me? I, I believe the budget books are completed. As you've seen, everything was balanced again. Our, our team works very hard on that. Everything is balanced. We're in a good shape. We did a lot of changes, as you'll see at the next meeting. We split some departments apart and moved some things around, so it was, it was a lot of work, and they did a great job on that. And I think they should be ready to get those books tomorrow. You can come get your books tomorrow, or however you, whatever it means, we get them to you. I can't remember if we send them or you pick them up, but, um, your books will be ready for pickup tomorrow, and then we'll dive into that at the next Budget Committee meeting. Are there any other follow-up questions for me regarding tonight? Yes.
Any way we can get that in digital, uh, the budget book emailed to as well? Or is it all paper only?
I think they put it together, just a physical, like, a, a actual... Yeah, I think they put it together as a book.
I like books, but I'm a digital guy, too.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Other than that, I think it's just like...
Not the big, not the big one, like with the buying, the, just the ones that has the, the form ones with the budget, with the departments. The, the other ones, we'll have those page when the 20, well, the 21st, you'll get where...
So you're not doing this one tomorrow?
Right.
You're not the department head tomorrow?
Right, yes, yes, yes. That with all the miscellaneous revenue.
Because you don't have all the numbers for this to be...
Right, right, I correct you.
So we're getting the department heads tomorrow. And the complete, when, when you get the real numbers from DLGF, we'll get these completed and know exactly where we're at. Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions for me?
Yeah, so we're not getting budget books tonight, I'm just...
Well, I appreciate all your time. Uh, thank you for working with us on this, and, um, obviously, this is one of the heaviest things we do all year. So it takes a lot of time, and Dylan, I appreciate you for working hard and, um, spending time with us tonight and all the other. I guess if we still have four more meetings, um, for this, so I'm looking forward to working with you. If you have any questions, I'll make myself available. The Controller's Office is available, and, you know, thank you again.
Just real quick, too, I want to make sure, so when we get the budget books for the council members, if we have questions about a particular department, how would you, uh, how would you like us to proceed with that?
Uh, um, so on our, on our 21st meeting, all of them will be here in person. So you can ask, um, we can, we can be here for two hours, or two and a half hours, three hours, if you need, to all be here in person to, uh, to ask any, answer any questions you have regarding their budget. And if there's, and there's more clarifications for that, we can probably schedule more meetings if you would like.
Is it okay if we email you or email them if there's something ahead of time? I'm just trying to...
Yeah, I would say if you would need to contact them ahead of the, the next meeting, just send the email to me, uh, with them attached.
Like CC, both of you? Okay, I got you. Okay. I'm just trying to, just sometimes it's little things that we want to ask, so... Um, but I would encourage the council members, if you ask a little thing and you get an answer, it probably means somebody else had that question, and then maybe you share it at the next meeting, too. So, great, anyone else? Any of the council members? Vice President Fordice?
I, I'm just curious if there's any way that we could have additional meetings instead of having one meeting on the 21st with all the department heads. I mean, that, that kind of gets very, very lengthy and very entailed with every single department head for one night. If, if, we used to, uh, split those up, you know, with like three department heads a night, or, and so we can answer all their questions and go over everything on their...
I think it's one of...
Line items and...
Yeah, no, and, and I thought about that, too. We, I talked to the mayor, and I said, we'll just schedule two now and see where things land. We can always schedule another one. Let's get through that second meeting. And if the questions still aren't answered, or we're, it, it's, we can definitely schedule a third one as well. I'm, I'm open to that for sure. It's just, I don't want to overschedule it, and then realize, ah, we don't need it anymore. Because we only need 48 hours to publish, so, um, we will, we'll just go to the next meeting. That's why I was asking about questions ahead of time.
Sure.
Maybe we can knock things out.
I was just thinking more for the public, because if they're committee meetings, then the public can show up.
Oh, yeah, sure. I mean, we have to publish it and get notice.
Yeah.
I would just encourage if anyone's watching or listening, um, to, if you're not sure if we're having another one, contact the Clerk's Office. It's posted. I put it on my Facebook page if we're having another Budget Committee meeting. So for sure, we're having the second one on August 21st. If we decide to have another one, well, then come to this meeting, you'll know. And, and if you're absolutely not sure, ask any of your council members, and they'll be able to let you know. But I'm not out, it's not out of the realm to have another meeting. Just kind of see where things land with questions.
So the, the 21st meeting, you're gonna have all the department heads here. And we're gonna go through everybody's budget on one night.
The, the goal, the goal of this is, so when you get a budget book tomorrow, the goal is to try not to wait until the la, till that actual meeting to ask the questions. I make myself available, and all, and we'll make ourselves available from a department to answer as many questions as you need. The hope is that, um, we can work continuously over the next two weeks to get all those questions answered, and not just wait till that night. Then when we come together, that'll be more so if everybody can answer the questions that you've already asked, um, in another setting. And I'll have, and I have one-on-ones with everybody again, I think, next Friday.
And I, and council members have been on for more than two years. My understanding is that previous process, there wasn't as much access to department heads, so maybe we needed more meetings. I'm not sure, but with the mayor being totally accessible, department heads, my hope is that we can get these things knocked out, and then maybe do some follow-up at that meeting as well, so... But, yeah, it's not for a lot, and we're not trying to not be transparent. We're just trying not to have four, three-hour meetings that just drag on and on. So I just encourage all of you, if you've got questions, email the mayor, CC the department head. And if you think it's something that's worth sharing with the rest of the council, share it at the next meeting. If we get to the next budget meeting, and we're like, oh, we got way more questions, or more things come up, then we can definitely schedule another Budget Committee meeting, for sure.
So how, 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 I'm sorry, how long is it gonna be before we get the main budget meeting that you're gonna have? I understand the department heads, but I mean the main one with, with, with everything in it. Because these don't have the edit fund and everything else detailed line itemed out. These are just department heads. So this is the big one. It's got all the edit funds and capital improvements, and... So when, what are we looking at on that? How far before the 21st are we gonna have this, if we're gonna sit down? Okay, so...
Next week?
She's waiting on the numbers from the DLGF. That's, that's really the whole...
Okay, so we won't know the line items on the edit fund and the capital improvements and...
We have to print those off, because we already have those in Gateway. It's just not in the...
It's not gonna be in the department heads book.
All right. We can print those off, but include it in your package.
Yeah, the more you get to us ahead of time, it's, we're gonna save a lot of time and, and questions. So anything you have that's gonna end up in that book, scan it, email, whatever you can do, get it to us ahead of time. That'd be great. Awesome. Anything else?
Paige, thank you really for putting this together and coming down, because that, that was a lot of good information. And I'm gonna see about getting you an extra two weeks paid vacation, so...
All right. Uh, any other questions? Okay. I don't think, I don't, I don't, we don't do motions to close these meetings out. It's been a hot minute. It's been a year. All right, we're adjourned.